The Oatana City Council Meeting to order for Tuesday, February 18th. May we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Schultz.
Here.
Burbank.
Here.
Rainey.
Here.
Svenby.
Here.
Trulson.
Here.
Dotson.
Here.
Abraham.
Here.
And Mayor Koontz.
Here.
We have all seven and the council mayor present.
Thank you. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible) 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 I'd like to welcome everyone here tonight and with that, we don't have any changes to
the agenda, so we'll look for a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
(inaudible)
We got a motion by Greg Schultz, second by Raymond Trulson. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This has been approved. Next item on the agenda is Mr. John Peterson-Petersburg with the House of Representatives. If you'd like to come forward and give us your preseason update.
Thank you, Mr. Abraham. Appreciate that. You know, we're starting our session a week from today and so there's a...I've been busy with a lot of different things going on up at the Capitol and so forth, getting ready for that. Matter of fact, I was up there today, meeting with the Transportation, a joint meeting between the Senate and House Transportation Committees, dealing with just planning for the first day of session. And I know that there was unveiling of Move Minnesota program in which there really been a request for additional funding for investment in the infrastructure of our roads and bridges. And so there'll be a lot more discussion before any of that takes place. But it's interesting. I think it's important for us to realize that transportation being one of the more important infrastructures, especially that we have in outstate Minnesota, greater Minnesota, is that with the last few years in which revenues have actually been declining from cash, sales tax, not sales tax, but gas tax and per gallon of gas and others, that we do need to find some way of really creating some additional dollars for our roads. Today, we again reiterated 268,000 miles of road in the state of Minnesota. That includes townships and cities and counties and state as well, but that's a lot of road to take care of. And a lot of those are running 50 years old or older and needing some repair. And we haven't had enough funding stream in order to be able to accomplish that. So it's going to be a challenge. And one of the things that I'm thinking eventually we're going to have to decide is since transportation is not only about moving people from place to place, or even cargo from place to place, it is more also about commerce, getting jobs to where they need to go and other things, then I think our antiquated system of providing funding only from user fees by vehicles is probably not effective, especially when you start adding in the fact that cars are more efficient, we have alternative energy source vehicles as well. So that's going to be a challenge this year as well. There are probably four topics that will get discussed, two of which I'm not sure will gain a lot of traction, but they have gotten some media support the last few months or so. One of them is liquor sales on Sundays. There is a...this is something that comes up every so often. Right now, there are people for it, people against it. A lot of the smaller liquor store owners said it really isn't going to impact them that much because people buy their supply on Saturdays. And so now they would just have to stay open Sunday, probably not increase their sales any, but they have to have more overhead because they've got to have more employees working. Companies like, you know, Hy-Vee and others that are open anyway, they would see it as a benefit. And of course, there are individuals who don't like to have to plan ahead and like to have it early. So I don't know where that's going to go, but I know it gets...it comes up every couple of years. Another one that kind of took me a little bit by surprise was the recycling bill in which their PCA was requested a couple of years ago to put together a plan, or at least a report, on how to improve recycling. And I think we all want to improve recycling, so that's not the issue. But their plan came back as we're going to charge 10 cents refund or deposit for every bottle and beverage container that we sell. So that's not just drinks, it's not just cans of pop, it's also milk, it's also shampoo, it's also, you know, anything that would be a container that's recyclable would have a 10 cent cost to it. And then, of course, you would have to keep them segregated and carry them in your trunk or whatever to wherever you need to get the 10 cents back out of. And their plan also indicated that we would have so many recycling areas based upon population. So it'd be one in every county, plus so many for however many population there is. Their plan was 1,100 additional recycling areas around the state. And it seemed like, if I remember right, somewhere around 80 employees across the state in order to prove that, to handle that. So whereas I really think we need to improve recycling, I'm not sure that that really is the best use of our dollars, nor is it successful. We know that Minneapolis instituted the one sort, much like Steel County has now. In their first month, they increased recycling 57 percent, and they expect within a year to have it doubled. Seems to me that's a pretty good improvement on it. Now, we do know that there are a couple of areas that are a little bit shy or don't recycle as well. That includes large venue items, places like sporting events, concerts and so forth, and as well as apartments. They also tend not to recycle as well. So I think there are ways we can improve that, but I'm not sure we want to go wholesale into having vending machines or some other way of recycling back and getting your 10 cents out of the piece. So I don't know that that'll take on much traction either. The two that I do expect to come up this year are the anti-bullying bill for the educational systems. And I think everybody needs to be really careful about that one and watch that one. It's something that we want to do whatever we can to eliminate bullying as much as we can. I don't think anybody wants to have their children bullied or picked on or teased. But at the same time, we know that Minnesota School Board Association and the school boards have spent years developing not only harassment and developing it and getting it working so that it works in the system, but they also have a very conscientious and involved bullying bill that they...that all the school districts have also approved. And so we think that might be a better way of doing it. The issue with the current bill as it stands is there are some reporting issues in there in which the reports go to the State Department of Education. Parents are not, in the current bill at least, are not notified one way or the other whether their child is the bully or the bullying person. We don't know where that data is going to go to and where it's going to handle, how it's going to be used. We also know that most of the school districts that I've been to have said they're going to almost have to hire one person just to deal with monitoring and the recording of this. So I think that's one also to watch. The other one that we know is going to come up too is the minimum wage bill. That one's passed the House already, and the Senate is still taking that up. The House passed a 950, I believe, was the version. Senate was more in the 790. Currently, federal is 755 or 765. So it's a little bit of an increase there. But I think we need to be real careful about what that does for our summer jobs, for college kids, those that are just beginning and going into the job market. Really, minimum wage jobs are those jobs that require very little, if any, skills that are really about learning how to punch a time clock and doing a lot of service-oriented jobs. And my way of thinking is that a job ought to really dictate the value of what it does and not govern arbitrarily. We know from past experience that every time a minimum wage is increased, our youth have had a higher unemployment rate. It has gone up. So we're not sure where that one's going to go. Obviously, all of those come back from conference committee different than when it was passed from either House or Senate, and so we aren't sure about that. Those are primarily the things that I'm aware of and what's going on. I'm very happy that corridors of commerce over this past year, the bonding proposal for that, got us another section of Highway 14, at least in this area, done. Two more sections got finished, an interchange and a section over by North Mankato. That's all good. Every step forward is positive. They call this Phase One of the Oatana to Dodge Center, Highway 14 expansion. So we're glad that that got done. It's only a little less than three miles. That means there's 13-something left, but we'll keep working on that. We just need to find the funding sources for it. And I think that can be done. We just need to keep working on it. And I know Les has been involved with that for a long time, and so has Ray. Appreciate all the support that you do in that regard as well. With that, I think I'll just open up to questions, concerns that you guys might have, something that you want me to take back to the Capitol, or questions that you may have of me.
I do have one, John. Last year, the tax on purchases by the city and counties, that bill was passed. I know that in talking to Vicki, she was surprised to find that there were so many exemptions in it, or exceptions in it that didn't, weren't included, that she thought was included in it.
Right.
Is there a way that you can go back, clarify some of this, and get everything cleaned out of it so that there's basically, we don't have to worry about paying sales tax on any items?
Yeah, I think that's a valid point. And my hope is that that was just an oversight, that there was something that can be corrected. And I'll talk to the people on the Tax Committee as well and see what we can do to eliminate some of those things because it's...
Yeah, I think the bottom line was is that we got some things taken out, but the paperwork to try to figure out what we have to pay and what we don't have is costing us more money than what we had before, so.
Right, yeah. You know, the whole taxing situation this year was really kind of unique and strange in that there were so many exemptions and exclusions. And it wasn't just with this sales tax issue, it had to do also with estate taxes and others in which, for some reason this year, the leadership did not want to fully comply with federal estate taxing as well. So whereas limits were raised for federal income tax for a lot of irrevocable trusts and so forth, they were kept at only $1 million for them, $5 million by the federal. And so we're trying to figure out exactly why that happened, if it was something that was missed by the people who revised the bill and put it together or not. And so thank you for that. I will certainly pass it on, see what we can do to make that a little more uniform.
Thank you.
Because I agree, it makes little sense for a body that has to collect taxes than to pay taxes. It doesn't make much sense.
Raymond.
Just to comment on the recycling, you know, first of all, who's going to get the money that...say if we charge 10 cents like other states do now, who's going to get the money for the 10 cents?
Well, the way the bill is written, that I understand it, is that that'll be collected much like sales tax sent up to the state, and then they'll have to have a form system in which that gets brought back to the individual. And I know grocery stores don't, and Walmarts and things like that, they don't want to have to deal with it because we don't clean our recyclables very well. So you can imagine having that stored in the back room somewhere.
Ends up being a sanitation problem, and I can guarantee you, just being involved in that site for a long time, we will pay that in additional food costs.
Yeah, it just, for me, it just doesn't make a lot of sense to go this way when we have other ways that, in Minnesota at least, it seemed to be working. I know that there are other states that this seems to be effective, but here in Minnesota, we seem to do a real good job when we have the opportunity for people to recycle, they will. So I think we're conscientious that way here.
We ask our people to come and visit our state, and then we charge them, and they take that back with them, and it's just...
Oh, yeah, and even border fraud, you know, people bringing stuff from outside the state and into...and the other concern is, so people are going to go through your trash to find recyclables to, you know, you just don't want to do that, so.
Who's behind that bill, the recycling one?
You know, my understanding is that the PCA is not in favor one way or the other. They were just asked to present the report, and that it was the legislature that actually asked them to do that a couple of years ago. And so I think that...so I'm guessing that once they see the report, it's going to be say, "Well, it doesn't make a lot of sense." But it is a report that is coming out, and we have to deal with it.
I just have one little nit to pick. If we change the liquor law to allow liquor stores open on Sunday, it allows them to open, doesn't require them to be open.
Correct.
So mom-and-pop shops might not want to be open. They don't have to be open.
Right.
So I don't think that's a justification as to whether or not we should pass it. Business wants to be open on Sunday, let them be open on Sunday, because there's nothing forcing a business to be open.
Right.
Basically, it's just the same as what the state allows you to be open until 2:00. You look at it in your neighborhood or your area, and if you see nobody else is doing it, you're not going to do it either. But, you know, they're going to do it to keep competition equal. And that's the same thing, excuse me, the same thing is going to happen there is that it's...
Right. My point is that they don't have to stay open. I mean, you've got Fairway that's going to be closed on Sunday.
Yep.
They're not being forced to be closed on Sunday, there's not a law preventing them from being open on Sunday.
Right, right.
They can make that choice.
Yep.
Is there any...what agency, is there going to be some move on gas tax, or who's supporting that, who is not, or where does that stand kind of?
Well, right now, the governor has pretty much said that he's not going to support a gas tax increase. Both Chair Hornstein from the House and Chair Dibble from the Senate, and actually Chair Dibble, their committee actually passed the gas tax last year, but it was pulled out during conference committee. And so we don't expect that there will be a gas tax increase this year, although we believe that they will push for it. Now, the Move Minnesota group is pushing towards what they call wholesale gas tax, which is really more like a wholesale sales tax, in which it's based upon wholesale prices of that. And that's getting some traction because that can fluctuate a little bit quicker than gasoline tax, since gasoline is taxed right now based upon just a gallon. So if it's 20 cents a gallon, for example, and you've got $3 gas or $4 gas, it still is only 20 cents, where this would allow that to fluctuate up and down. There are some opponents against that as well. I know that most of the Minnesota Chamber of Commerce and the State Chamber of Commerce tends to be running against that, not necessarily because of it in itself, but last time we had a major gas tax, they really worked hard at getting it funded with the understanding that there would also be, in addition to it, efficiencies made by the Department of Transportation. And they really haven't seen much efficiencies to their liking there as well. And so they're concerned about how we just raise additional revenue if we aren't going to improve, because we really need to find a major source to carry on the ongoing infrastructure growth and...
When was the last time gas tax was raised, state of Minnesota?
I believe it was in the early 2000s, I think.
Around 2003, I believe it was.
Yeah, because I...it was actually an override by Governor Plente in his...he had vetoed it, and then it was overridden in order to accomplish it, so.
But there was change, in '08, there was a transportation amendment. Was there no increase in the gas tax at that time, just a change in allocation of funding?
At that time, there was an actual increase in the gas taxes.
In '08?
Yeah.
That one as well?
No, I'm not sure about that in '08. I think the 2003 was the last one, but I could be wrong.
Any other questions? Thank you very much, and...
Thank you, and I know, I don't know if anybody are coming up for next week. I think, isn't there a city and greater city event or something next week?
On the 27th is the City-County School. Then I'm not sure if anyone's going on to that, because there...we have several that are going up on March 5th for the Legislative Action Day.
Okay. Well, if any of you may get up there, come up and see me and bring concerns with. I appreciate that, and I think you all have my email or at least can get it. Let me know if there's something that I can help with or at least review, so.
Are you usually around Fridays?
I'm usually here in town Fridays.
Work Fridays usually?
Church, and...but otherwise, you know, I can make a special point of it too, so. But thank you so much. Appreciate it for all that you do too here at the city.
Thank you.
You do a good job. Thank you.
Good luck up there.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to the next item is public meeting, public hearing issue and reserve bonds for the South Central Human Relations Center. And with that, we have Rhonda here. If you'd like to step forward and give us a little explanation of what you're doing.
Want to sign in?
Oh, thank you. Mayor Koontz and members of the City Council, my name is Rhonda Scobie. I'm with Kennedy and Graven. I'm here today as your bond counsel. We're here for the public hearing and the resolution relating to the issuance of bonds for the benefit of the South Central Human Relations Center. And Carolyn Wheeler is here tonight if there are questions about the project or about the work that they're doing. The city gave initial preliminary approval to the notes in January with a maximum authorized amount of $3.2 million. Tonight, the resolution has a maximum authorized amount of $2.5 million. It's a lower amount as plans get closer to finalized. The amount has gone down, and as plans firm up, I think the actual amount will come in lower, but that's the maximum amount of the loan that the resolution authorizes. The purpose of the loan is to refinance two existing indebtedness obligations. One of them was issued by the city in 2002 as a tax-exempt bond, and the other is a taxable note that they entered into with United Prairie Bank. The other purpose is capital improvements and an expansion at their facility on Florence The bonds are expected to be issued by the city, and it would be a loan. So there's no pledge of the city's general obligation, there's no pledge of any of the city's assets. It's a complete conduit revenue bond. That would be a revenue loan that would be repaid by South Central Human Relations Center. Because it's a bond issued by the city for a nonprofit, it does count against the city's $10 million bank qualification limit. It's my understanding that the city does not currently anticipate running into that limit even with this obligation. However, if an unforeseen event occurs and the city does issue bonds during 2014, the bond documents do require the borrower to make the city whole, and there's a formula for the savings differential that the city would lose out on by not having its bank qualification. So that's important to know also. Does the council have any questions?
Raymond.
They...this re-infinance, when was these bonds issued originally? 2003, you said?
2002 was the tax-exempt issue.
2002, then...
Yes, and there is, the tax-exempt loan, I believe, was in 2008. I'm sorry, I don't have that exact date of the second.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Thank you very much.
With that, we'll open the public hearing at 7:25. If anyone in the audience wishes to be heard on this issue, please come forward to the microphone and sign in.
I'll move to close the hearing.
We have a motion to close the hearing at 7:21. Do we have a...by Raymond Trulson, do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Greg Schultz. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Now, any questions from the council? What is the council's wishes?
I'll move approval.
We have a motion by Raymond Trulson to approve this request. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Brent Svenby. Any further discussion there? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This has been approved. Thank you, and good luck with it, so. With that, we'll move on to financial report, and I'll do a quick recap of our financial report. We have $21,041 for Central Valley Co-op for a few purchases, $25,365 for Harris Enterprises, $40,901 for South Central Drug Enforcement Investigation Unit, $120,944 for Southeast Service Cooperative, $202,980 for other expenditures for a grand total of $411,232. What is the council's wishes?
Motion to pay the bills.
We have a motion by Kevin Rainey to pay the bills. Do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Nate. Any further discussion there? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The financial report has been approved. With that, we'll move on to the consent agenda items, and these are items all grouped such as minutes, permit requests, et cetera, into one motion. And what is the council's wishes on this?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Brent to approve. Do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Dave Burbank. Any further discussion? Raymond.
That Board of Appeals, is that...did the council have a chance to look at that date? That's approving that Board of Appeals and Equusiation under consent agenda, that's April?
21st.
Yeah, is that...everybody agreed to that?
That date was set by...
Yeah, the county, yeah.
Yeah, we have to accept that.
No, I know, but I just wondered if that works out for everybody, because it is under the consent as well.
Well, it will be...we will be...need to set the meeting for that.
Okay.
I do have one thing in the minutes of the meeting, I think it's been corrected, is that for the issue at the airport, I recuse myself because of a potential conflict of interest, and the minutes should be rewritten to reflect that. So that with that change...
They have been updated as such.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion on the consent agenda? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This has been approved. Now we move on to action items. We've got the first one, which is license and permits for Fairway Stores for tobacco permit, and we'll go to Jeanette.
Yep, we have received a request from Fairway Stores, Inc. for a tobacco permit. This is the retail permit for them to sell tobacco and products. They're at their store. This will be at the new store there. We have received the completed application and the insurance information as well as the fee. It is an annual fee of $150 that has been received. Our licenses are annual, that expire every December 31st, and they're hoping that we have this tonight, because the last date that she gave me is they're hoping to, planning now to open the stores of March 20th.
Fantastic, thank you. Any questions from the council?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Nate to approve. Do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Greg Schultz. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This has been approved also. Moving down to resolutions, we have one resolution, 10-14, Support the Move Minnesota Campaign, and I think we'll talk with Tom on this.
Yes, the Move, as Representative Petersberg said, Move Minnesota Campaign, was at the state Capitol today. The Move Minnesota Campaign is made up of members from all over the state of Minnesota, private individuals, trucking companies, government agencies, and what their goal is is to meet the needs in a way that is consistent with Move Minnesota's principles of a comprehensive, balanced, sustainable, and dedicated funding package. So it doesn't only include roads, includes trails and the whole works. And they're just asking that the city of Oatana sign on for support for that, and I recommend we do.
Thank you, Tom. Any question? Raymond.
Is there a fee, Tom, to belong to?
No fee.
No fee?
No fee.
Where do they get their expenses paid, like advertising, and where do they get the money for that?
They probably have some private donations that go into that.
Yep.
Okay.
One of the things that Greg and I had talked about is we belong to the Highway 14 partnership. There is a transportation... There is a Transportation Alliance organization in Minnesota here, and the Move Minnesota, and we were looking at maybe Tom and I putting the package together for a study session to talk about the different organizations, and what they really amount to, and how we are involved with them. So that will be coming here within the next few weeks, so... But as far as the Move Minnesota, it's to support the projects that are being requested, so...
Moved to approve.
We have a motion by Greg to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Kevin? Brent, okay.
Last.
Yes.
And I've looked into the campaign as well a little bit. I do not support signing on to this, primarily because they're trying to overcome an issue that the state unfortunately has put us in, given what the transportation amendment changes. They've been diverting large amounts of money to mass transit projects, which are essentially boondoggles. They require high subsidies, they have low ridership. They are constitutionally bound to go to those projects, which disproportionately benefit the metro area, and Outstate has been suffering because of that. When had that money been utilized appropriately, we would not have nearly the transportation problems we currently have. So while I support the idea in general, I think the state legislature can fix this problem without this initiative.
And, yeah, I understand, but along with the Highway 14 Partnership and the other ones, we're trying to convince the state legislature to do that, so it's...
Yeah, but I think this is going to be used as a justification to increase, essentially taxation, whether it's through gas taxes or wheelage taxes. When they have the tax revenue, they've just misallocated it. So I'm not supportive of creating new funding sources when current ones have not been utilized...
You're saying this organization, Move Minnesota, has done that?
No, I'm saying there, the support of this Minnesota, of this group, I fear will be justification in the eyes of the legislature to create, or to bring in more funding for transportation, and to further misallocate more funds for transportation projects that do not benefit Outstate. They disproportionately benefit the metro, and they go into projects like light rail lines and trains that people do not ride, and they do not charge enough to cover their costs. It requires subsidies, and we suffer in Outstate because of that. So, well, like I said, I think this is probably a noble cause, but my fear is that it will be, it will be used as justification for things that won't fix our problem. We've had multiple transportation initiatives in the past decade. Every time, it's, "Well, this is going to fix our problem," and it doesn't fix our problem. Well, now this is going to fix our problem. Well, I'm sorry, you haven't changed anything at the state level, and I fear this would be the same thing.
Okay, Tom?
My only comment is that Move Minnesota is looking at the bigger picture, not just looking at mass transit or whatever. They're looking at everything for the state of Minnesota, not just one area. So they support the whole, the whole package. I understand what you're saying, by legislature might decide to go the other direction, but as far as Move Minnesota does, it supports the whole package for the state of Minnesota.
Right, and there's support for mass transit projects with Move Minnesota, which many of them have proven to be losers. And my fear is that that will continue with the support of this program.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
We have one nay for this, thank you. And with that, we'll move on to our next item on the agenda, which is variance number 1380, Bevcom Incorporated, and I'll go to Troy with that.
This is a request by Bevcom Incorporated for a communications building on O.J. Havelka's property, formerly known as H&amp;S Distributing. The property is in an I-1 light industrial district. The ordinance requires setbacks for accessory buildings in industrial districts to behalf of what the primary structure of that zoning district requires. The request is for two setback variances to allow for a 1,480 square foot communications building to be constructed and replace an existing communications building on the site. The variances would be to allow for a five-foot rear yard setback on the north property line, where a 20-foot setback would be required, and a 10-foot side yard setback on the west property line, where a 15-foot setback is required. There is an existing 20-by-12 communications building at this location. That structure would be removed for the new building. The new building would be roughly 40-by-40 with an angled wall that reduces the square footage along the north side there, along the railroad tracks. It would be of precast concrete tip-up panel and a 16-foot tall ceiling. All the current fiber network cables come up through the ground of the existing building, and all the cables would remain the same at that location for the new building. We did have a public hearing at Planning Commission, and there were no objections to the proposed requests, so staff would recommend approval of this variance request as recommended by the Planning Commission.
Thank you, Troy. Any questions from the council? What is the council's wishes?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Nate to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Dave Burbank. Any further discussion? Seeing none of those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This has been approved. Moving on to the next one is a conditional use permit for minor PUD for two buildings in one parcel, and I will go with Troy again.
This is a request by CFT Developments LLC, which is the owner of the property. This is the property east of the McDonald's, where Panda Express is currently located. It's in a B2 community business district and also within the highway business sign overlay district. The ordinance does permit minor PUDs as a conditional use permit. The request is to allow for two primary structures on the one parcel. The proposed structure would be located east of the current restaurant, Panda Express Restaurant, and would contain shared parking, shared access points, and signage. The building would be a 70-by-50 building for 3,500 square feet, and would be built for an aspen dental office. Parking, stormwater, and signage all meets ordinance requirements. Again, head of public hearing at Planning Commission had no objections to the proposed requests, and therefore staff would recommend approval of this conditional use permit as recommended by the Planning Commission.
Thank you, Troy. Raymond.
How many employees will they have in this building, Troy? Do you have a feeling?
We did not get a number on that. I think we're, I think they're in the 10 to 15 employee range.
That's going to take up a lot of the parking available, we see, and...
Well, they would not all be working at the same time, but...
Oh, also, they're open quite a few hours, and they extend them.
Yeah.
Okay. I guess one thing that kind of disturbs me sometimes, if nobody's here to represent, they seem like, once it's been through the Planning Commission, people just don't have to show up anymore, and we've seen that on...
I know that at the Planning Commissions, they do recommend that the people come to the council.
Well, I know that, but I get very upset if the people don't represent that, because just because they approve it doesn't mean we're always going to approve it, and I think sometimes people ought to consider that, so...
Okay, thank you. Any questions?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Nate to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Greg Schultz. Any further discussion on this? Seeing none of those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This has been approved. Now we go move on to public comment. If anyone wishes to speak on issues not on the agenda, please come to the microphone and sign in. Seeing no one is rushing up here, I will move on to council comment, and we will start with Greg.
I would say just be safe out there. The snowbanks are getting pretty high on the intersection.
Yes, they are. Dave?
And we have another snow event forecast for Thursday, so be safe and be patient.
Well, hopefully with all the melting that's happened today, some of it's gone down. Kevin?
I have nothing tonight.
Brent?
I have nothing this evening.
Raymond?
Have nothing.
Mr. Mayor?
Nothing to add.
And we're going to let Jeanette speak, and please...
I have nothing to add.
Well, I have nothing either, so...
Alls I know is that there ought not snow till noon on Thursday.
With that, motion for adjournment. Some of, motion by Kevin?
Second.
Second by Raymond. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting is adjourned.